Okay, go ahead.
Thanks. Good evening. It is 6:03 PM on March 25th, 2021. This Laguna Beach Unified School District's School Board Study Session. An update on Board Resolution 20-16, Equity Work in LBSD. Our meeting is virtually reconvened. For those just tuning in, I want to highlight the board has received all written public comments, the electronic submission through the LBSD Public Comment Form, which closed today at noon, so that we can all receive it and read it before the meeting. On agenda, you'll see the notations for live public comment. We start with our student board rep, Soren people. Can you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Yes, unfortunately, my Wi-Fi is being a little glitchy, so we do not have a flag, but here we are.
That's okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, there was no report out of closed session. Dr. Bor, are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Okay. So with that, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended? My fellow board members?
That is.
Kelly or Osborne, sorry. Any discussion? See, Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call, please?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. The motion to adopt the agenda carries five zero. This moves us to number five on the agenda. Update on the Board Resolution 2016 Equity Work in LBSD. Um, this is our study session. Mr. Collin, can you look to see if there's anyone wanting to make public comment? I'm just going to go over the procedures real quick while you're doing it. This is your opportunity to make a live public comment on LBSD's equity work in this meeting. That said, we always welcome all of your thoughts, opinions, and ideas that you share with us. You can email the board and superintendent after the meeting, if you like, as well as there'll be opportunities in this work to share with us as the, as we progress as for our community. If you'd like to make a comment and you're viewing the meeting via Zoom webinar, raise your hand prior to the board discussion on an item or on this item, and we'll recognize you, and you can unmute your microphone. If you're calling in, press star nine on your phone if you'd like to comment during the, during this period. Once recognized, to make your comment, press star six, unmute. When you hear your phone is unmuted, please proceed with your comment. Speaking time will be limited to three minutes per speaker, 20 minutes per topic. Staff will keep the time and notify the speaker at three minutes. At 20 minutes on topic, staff will notify the board president with consent. The time may be modified to allow for additional public comment. Mr. Collin, is there anyone wishing to speak on the study session tonight?
Yes, there is. Linnea has her hand up. I just don't have the rights to invite her in at this time, so someone else might need to do that.
Oh, because everything's so clear. Okay. Who, Victoria?
Oh, I am. I've just become a co-host.
Yeah, okay.
There we go. So, Linnea, you're free to speak.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening. The adoption of the anti-racism resolution was a great first step for our district. At this time, I would like to share some concerns regarding how this work is being carried out in the beginning. Says, I am concerned that the forming of the Equity Steering Committee was done without public knowledge or community input. The members of the committee have not been made public nor have concerns regarding whether all stakeholders are represented, been addressed in an appropriate manner. For the resolution, the committee will include Black, Indigenous, Hispanic, Asian, and other people of color, representing students, staff, and community members. Does the committee consist of members of all people of color? Are LBGTQ families represented, AAPI families? Are there students of color on the committee? Are teachers and staff included who are educated and trained in anti-discrimination? Information regarding the makeup of the committee and the roles they play should be made public and available to the community. In addition, several communications from the district have addressed the notable progress that has been made in regards to this work. A paid consulting company, Education Elements, is being used to facilitate this work, but district families have not received any information as to the progress that has been made so far. Specific information regarding the steps being taken should be communicated on a monthly basis to students and families. Many incidents of racism and discrimination experienced by students in the area of curriculum, social, emotional, athletics, et cetera, are unknown to the district as a direct result of a lack of communication with the families who may be experiencing these issues on a personal level. The burden is on the people of color to identify areas of discrimination, and that should not be the case. Transparency in this work is huge. The success of the resolution cannot be measured in data and facts alone. It should also be measured in experiences and actions. For families of color, racism and discrimination happen on a continual basis. These families deserve to have full transparency about the work that is being done to create a district that is equitable and safe for their children. Trust in the process cannot be built when the work is being done behind closed doors. Racism, discrimination, and colonialism in the curriculum respired district is a huge issue and often goes unnoticed until students and families bring it to the attention of district staff. For example, Studies Weekly, the fifth grade social studies curriculum, suggests an activity in which students are to role-play the trade triangle, including that of a slave owner whose prop is a rope and that of a slave. Imagine being a student, especially a student of color, sitting in this classroom, reading this curriculum. Black History Month came and went in our district with little to no acknowledgement, even after the passing of the resolution and the events of the past 12 months. Acknowledgement of history months and cultural holidays are almost nonexistent in our schools. The PTA at top of the world has been the one beacon of light in regards to this work. Implementation of progressive change cannot take months or years to implement, but it must happen in a timely manner. I highly support the work of the anti-racism resolution in our district. I am asking that this process include all stakeholders, that there is a direct method in which families may present instances of racism and discrimination to the district, that transparency and regular communication regarding the specific work being done is made a top priority. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and hopefully tonight, a lot of your questions will be answered in your comments. Mr. Collin, is there anyone else who's willing to speak? Or wanting to make public comment this evening?
Yes, we have Sheri Morgan. It's, you're now invited in.
Hi, thank you. I fully support everything that Linnea just said. I think it's very important that there is full transparency on this topic. I'm pleased to see a group in guiding our administration, but there is also some concerns. And I understand that the initial idea, I believe, behind this is to address race and religion and LGBTQ, but I also am curious as to how the district and the board is defining equity. Equity is defined as the state quality or ideal of being just, impartial, and fair. The concept of equity is synonymous with fairness and justice. It is helpful to think of equity as not simply a desired state of affairs or lofty value to be achieved and sustained. Equity needs to be thought of as a structural and systemic concept. I'm concerned that we are approaching equity and this study as a without including all aspects of the subject, because when we discuss equity, not only is it important to discuss race, not only is it important to identify the LGBTQ community as well as the different races, but it's also important to understand and look at and evaluate our own system, and if we're following those guidelines. I have total respect for the, the assistant superintendents that have been recently hired, that have been around for a long time. I work very well with them. I've had fabulous conversations. They are very forward-thinking and very forward with their information, and they're very approachable. However, I am concerned that in the last five years, we've had 14 administrative positions, executive administrative positions, three of which are women. The other nine, woo, my math, 11 are men. In this process as well, we've had four women leave. One of those women was showed up on the monthly ledgers, receiving a payout every month, which begs to question what happened there. I think it's important as this committee goes forward, as this group goes forward, and as tonight's study session goes forward, that we look at truly how our own board and district is functioning, and if we are actually following the example that we are expecting our district to have, because our administration does not show that. Thank you very much.
Mr. Collin, is there anyone else wishing to make public comment this evening?
Yes, Monica, it's now your turn.
All right. Hi, can everyone hear me?
We can. Hi, Monica.
Great. Good evening. So I have a few questions. The first one is, when would we be seeing a difference in curriculum? How soon would that be implemented? Like authors of color, different abilities, sexual orientations added to the required reading lists? When would we be able to see non-colonial history perspectives in the curriculum added? When would we be able to see, like colonial days in the elementary school level? Like totally, you know, being eradicated from the holiday schedule? My third, my second question is, when the preamble that was created, I think it was in 2016 preamble, it specifically states that Black Lives Matter. Will the Laguna Beach Unified School District make it a point to actively seek to hire Black or African-American educators into the district, question mark? Um, if so, what is the plan to do so? And then my third and final question, several students have been caught or have caught their peers on video saying the hard N-word this summer specifically after the signing of the resolution. My question is, what, if any, is the plan for the district to do? Or how to treat that specific incident? How are individual school sites and the school district prepared to deal with that specific incident as it occurs? Because it is still happening. And how will the parents be prepared to be dealt with that, since it is still sort of like an issue? And I think those are my three questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collin, is there anyone else wishing to speak this evening?
There are no other hands up at this time.
Thank you so much. Because there's no longer a number of public comments. And again, you can email us after this, and it's going to be an ongoing process, and so, and hopefully partake. So the floor is yours, Dr. Bor.
Just a sec. So the, those questions will be answered in the presentation, basically?
Well, public comment, we don't, we can't address by law. We can't address.
But I thought you said most of those would be answered in the presentation.
I said that. I hope that most of these will be addressed in the, in the presentation or within the work. They definitely will be addressed. I'm not sure what the presentation is. I'm, I'm experiencing the presentation, just like the member Perry said. I don't know.
Okay. Um, okay, so well, I guess I also don't understand why, you know, if all groups are being represented, I mean, that's not going to be addressed.
Yes, the presentation is about to begin. That's what the study session's for. Those questions, I just don't, I just don't, I wrote down as many as I could, and I'm hoping they're all going to be addressed. Okay. Same as Dr. Bor wrote them down, and this Weber wrote them down, and that we have them, and that they're going to be addressed throughout this. I just didn't want to promise every single one of them, because I couldn't even write down every single one of them as everybody talked.
Okay. I wrote them down too, Carol, our president Norman, and so.
That's what I meant by that, is I just, I can't guarantee that. So, but the floor is yours, Dr. Bor, to kick all of this off in our first meeting on this topic.
Well, again, I appreciate all of you here, and I appreciate the board for making this a focus for us as a school district. You know, we recognize this will be a journey. There will, you know, always be questions, and we hope to be able to answer many of those tonight. We also look forward to engaging in more conversations and including more folks in our community on this topic. This is just, I would say, our first step of many more to come. And I really appreciate Education Elements and the work that they've done over the last couple of meetings. And I look forward to having them work with the board tonight. And with that, I will introduce the Education Elements team, Kristin Howell, and let her do the rest of the introductions with our, with her team.
Kristin, I think you're on mute.
I'm definitely on mute. Sorry about that. Share my screen. It's been a long day. And we're going to go ahead and introduce ourselves and our organization. And then we have a lot of content we want to cover tonight. I'm hoping that a lot of the questions will be addressed, at least. There'll be a plan to address them. They'll understand when and how sort of the work is going to roll out over the course of the next several months and years. So with that, I will go ahead and introduce my team. I'll start. My name is Kristin Howell. Oh, sorry about that. Sorry, screen staring here.
You can still see our team's screen.
Oh, yeah. Oh, wonderful. Okay, I lost it in my second monitor. Kristin Howell, I'm actually a San Clemente native. I currently live in Denver. I spent the majority of my career in San Francisco Unified School District as a middle school math and science teacher, a coach. I worked in several turnaround schools there, and then I worked in the central office, in the superintendent's office. My role was strategy and innovation. And in that role, I supported our strategic planning and visioning processes and really helped to pilot and scale innovative approaches to close gaps in student learning, managing our partnerships with Salesforce, Twitter, Facebook, a lot of the big tech companies in San Francisco. I then spent four years working in Chicago Public Schools to help scale personalized learning and competency-based learning across schools on the south, south and west side of Chicago. And at Elements, I support districts across Texas and California and Oregon. And I work on projects really focused around students that are learning, school redesign, in addition to, of course, closing gaps in equity. I'm going to pass it off to Dave Hardy here to introduce himself.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. I am calling in from the East Coast, so I'm envious of the sunshine that I'm seeing in the, in the background of some of your, your photos. It's good to be here with you this evening. As Kristin mentioned, I'm David Hardy. I have served as a teacher, a principal, a district leader. I was chief academic officer in St. Louis Public Schools, and then eventually as a superintendent over the past 20 years of my career. I am lucky to be a part of this team and be a part of this conversation as a senior advisor supporting this work. You all are on the cusp of doing great things for the right reasons, and I'm just excited to be here tonight. Thank you for having me.
Marielle? Hi, everyone. My name is Maria Hernandez. I grew up in Inglewood, California. I'm the first person in my family to go to college, and education was incredibly important to me. I had the chance to go to Harvard on a scholarship, and when I graduated, I wanted others to have the same type of journey. So I've been a teacher, started off 2011, so it's almost been 10 years. I've been a second-grade bilingual teacher, also had the chance to start a college access program, been an instructional coach, and in this role, I get to work with districts, with school leaders who are really wanting to redefine systems and create change. I'm excited to be with you all here and really, really interested in hearing your perspectives as well as answering a lot of your questions. Take us away, Justin.
Great, yeah. Justin Tumer here as well. I'm part of, feeling lucky to be part of this team, but also part of the Laguna Beach Unified Team as well. I'm calling from Denver, Colorado. That's where I spent the majority of my career as a teacher and school administrator before joining this organization. I'm supporting districts from the range from Alaska to New Jersey right now, kind of all time zones in a number of different areas. And right now, what's really my priority is in addressing a lot of the equitable issues that, that we've already noted and underlying in our schools and our school systems for decades, but really came to a head over this summer. And so, feeling really privileged to be, to have this opportunity to work with you all. Again, hoping to answer some questions, let you know that we are aware of a lot of those questions that I think were shared earlier, and just so excited to kind of start this process with the board today.
A little bit about our organization. We, you know, gave a little bit of context through our introductions, but we've been around for 10-plus years. We've supported over 250 districts from Justin's introduction and from our introductions. You know, we work across the country everywhere from Hawaii to Alaska to Florida and in between. So we have a lot of different perspectives we've gained, working from districts of one school to some of the biggest in the country. And we work with districts across a variety of focus areas. Equity, again, being something that I think in the past year has been an incredible priority for us as an organization to really challenge the systems that are perpetuating inequality and to help to build more equitable school, school systems. So I'm going to pass it over to Jason and the, some of the board members here, to Miss Carol, who are going to speak a little bit to the why behind the work and a little bit about Laguna's journey with equity.
All right, Carol.
So I am sitting on the steering committee, and I just want to, and I was on the board when we wrote our resolution. And this work aligns with our vision and mission, our vision and mission as a district. It's taking ownership of each child's learning and helping them gain the experience and moral perspective they need to be successful, productive, global citizens. And it really ties into that, and so I hand the floor back to you, Jason.
Thanks. Yeah, well, this has been a journey, you know, since my arrival here, and I think it's an important to recognize that we still have a long ways to go in this journey. As you can see in our journey map, we have been doing work around unconscious bias training with teachers. We've been doing work with Anti-Defamation League and No Place for Hate. We've been doing work with our surrounding partners, North San Diego LGBTQ Center and Welcoming Schools, World of Difference with ADL. But we also recognize that issues continue to rise up and things that we need to continue to address. We still understand that there are issues that our LGBTQ students are reporting. We have, you know, issues with honoring history months and not honoring history months. And we still recognize there are blind spots in our work, and that is, that is something we will need to continue to work towards. And we understand that this is work that will never be done. And so I'm appreciative of the Education Elements team, of the members of the steering committee, and I appreciate all those that want to be a part of this work, because there will be ample opportunities as we continue this work to be a part of this very, very important work on behalf of our students and our broader community. So again, we look forward to engaging in this work with you, those who are on the call, those who are not able to attend tonight, and, and just know that you'll have an opportunity to see a little bit about the journey ahead, while also recognizing that, you know, we see this as, you know, from 2017, 18, all the way continuing on. So the journey will continue, and again, thank you for the board for making this a priority for us as a school district.
Great. And with that, one of the questions that came up is definitely something we want to address is defining what educational equity means, and specifically what it means for Laguna Beach, because we believe that it is, educational equity takes on definition for different communities, for different contexts, and it has to be, live and breathe your identity as a community. So that's something that we've been working with, the steering committee, to start to form. And our, and Justin is going to lead us through a little activity, actually, to explore different definitions of educational equity and start to tease out what it might mean for you here in Laguna Beach.
Yes, and while we do have a number of different ways to approach and define educational equity, what we felt like was really important as an organization is that we actually needed to kind of update and interrogate our definition of educational equity when we all kind of had this, this kind of like critical point of thinking and reflection last year. And so for us, it was a really powerful experience to kind of take the, this initial definition of where we, what we thought educational equity was, and really workshop that around the country with a number of great thought leaders and people who are really getting deep in this work, and that really pushed us. And so we went from having this definition that talked more about every young person being able to, you know, kind of contribute to the human story and the human condition. It's really starting to interrogate kind of why are we in this position in the first place anyways? So the first thing I want to do is, is actually read kind of where we landed after really workshopping this definition, and lets you know kind of how that really started to guide our work and our approach with you all, I'm here in Laguna Beach. And so for us, the way that we're defining educational equity is that it is the, the recognition that the barriers that our marginalized students are facing, so that, that is in, in kind of every diverse and equitable category. So we're talking about race, gender, socioeconomic status, right? LGBTQ plus areas, right? Like, so these are all the different kind of categories we want to be kind of counting into that marginalized students moniker there. But we want to think that all the barriers that our marginalized students are facing, those are actually due to deliberate actions and biases. So the fact that we still are seeing certain things that different populations of students are calling for, while it may not be the, the result of direct intention of the institution, like these are actually inherent elements of our systems that need to be named and interrogated. And so if we want to actually shift, shift these barriers and become more equitable, we actually need to require, we need to dedicate a greater amount of resources, tools, time, strategy, and understanding in order to remove those barriers. So these are not just, hey, this year, we realized that race was an issue. No, through the way that our system has been set up and established from the very beginning, we knew that we were going to create these, these challenges where different, different issues come up through marginalized students starting to learn, you know, their worth and really find their voice. We need to start to make sure that as a system, that we all are starting to become aware of that and become even more aware of our responsibility to actually remove those barriers. So it's not just enough for us to call them out. It's, it's really important that we realize it's going to take extra work to not just recognize them, to then eradicate them. Now, what I'd love for you all to do just right now, just think about, right? I gave you a bit of an explanation, gave you kind of my anecdote, and gave you a bit of our spiel. Because of kind of the way this is set up, I'm not going to ask any, for any, like, direct engagement right now, but I just want you to take a quick moment and reflect. How does that definition hit for me? Is this more of a one, where I feel like there still is a lot of work to be done with regards to what I'm hearing here, or I have questions? Or is this more of a five, where this really feels like this, this represents what I feel like educational equity is, and where the Laguna Beach Unified could be going? And just taking one step back, when we got a chance to engage in this activity with the steering committee, we had a lot of, a lot of great insights and positive feedback about people feeling like this was in the four and five range for them.
Are you asking the board members to hold up fingers for you?
I actually am now, so you beat, you beat me right to it, Carol. So this one was just a reflection. Nope, you beat me right to it.
Okay.
Kristin, I don't know if you're going to the next slide or not, but you can go ahead and do that right now. Thank you so much. So now that I got you kind of just oriented into the conversation, now I do want to get a little bit of engagement from you all and start to see how you feel about these things. And so what we wanted to do is we want to take you through a very brief exercise to, to share some of the, some traditional images and definitions that come to our mind when we think of equity. And we wanted to bring one of the more traditional images that come to mind, and that's the, when we think about equality versus equity, that is the, the boxes in the baseball game example. And so we're going to run through a few other examples, and I just want you to take a moment and actually reflect. When I think about these images, which of these images resonate with me the most? And the reason why, before you all start to rate, to rate this, the reason why this is an important activity, just to kind of acknowledge some of the comments that were shared earlier, is that before we dive in to start to make shifts and make recommendations, we wanted to make sure that we first got everybody on the same plane when it came to having our conversations about what we even understood equity to be. And so the first thing that we had to do was make sure, one, that we didn't just think it was equality. I loved us on my Reddit definition of equity earlier today. One, we had to make sure we understood that it was different from, from equality. And now that we have gotten that piece set, now we're digging a little bit deeper into understanding what does that actually mean for the Laguna Beach Unified? So with that kind of context in mind, now let's kind of get into it. So this first image here, the one that I think many of us have seen before and even seen remixes of, we've got the, we've got the boxes example. And so when I talk about educational equity in this example here, we're saying that these boxes, these boxes are like resources. And so in this definition, educational equity means ensuring that resources are distributed in a manner that allows the same access for all others. So this means that our focus is on making sure everyone has the same access. How much does that definition resonate with you? Is that a one, two, a three, a four, or five? Now I'm going to be scrolling down on, on the Zoom to see like kind of where we are, so just hold up for the next 20 seconds for me. Are you a one, a two, a three, a four, or five? Like, how does this make you feel? Does this seem like equity to you? Seeing some fours. Seen some fours overall? Okay, okay. Four is a couple of twos and the three. All right, okay, okay, okay. So we started to see a few of us, this is an impressive, okay, okay. All right, let's move on to the next one. Let's move on. Let's see, let's see what we can do together. This next definition, this is moving a little bit more complex. We're talking about the difference between equality and equity using bikes as an example here. Okay? And so the way that we're going to break this one down is that educational equity means that we're broadening the definitions of success. We're actually broadening what it means to be successful at Laguna Beach Unified compared to what we've done historically. And that's represented in this image by the fact that each of these different characters here have the right size bike for them. And we're broadening the definition of success. So therefore, again, we can increase access for wider variants of learners. So maybe we're starting to feel like Laguna Beach is shifting a little bit, and we need to start to broaden what it means to be successful in this area. So that way, more people can feel like they're contributing here. So now I want you to take a second and reflect on this one and do the same exercise. Let me know from a scale of one to five, how is this resonating with you? Two, four, two, three, four, four. All right, some of us feeling this one, not totally knocking out of the park, but others were really not, were not connecting with this one either. Okay. Let's get to our last one. Our last one is, is one of the more newer ways that I've really seen folks try to define kind of the difference between equality and equity. And this is really talking about the environment, right? The environment. So if we're thinking about educational equity in Laguna Beach in this way, we're talking about the fact that equity manifests itself within every element of the system, right? So whether that's water, sunlight, and soil, every element of, of that is meant to, is meant to support the growth of a plant, right? And so every element of equity is meant to also support the growth of students in a number of different ways. And so that means that we're, instead of talking about resources and definition of success, we actually need to rethink our system to make sure that we're paying particular attention to those who've been historically underserved. So do we need to, hey, we've got some pretty good things going on. We need to broaden the access. We need to make sure we give everybody resources. Or is it the fact that the way that we're defining success needs to be updated in Laguna? Or right now, is it that we've got kind of an environment that is not serving our most, kind of our most at risk, our most at need, and we need to kind of shift the way our system and our environment is set up? How is this one resonating with you all? Go ahead and put it up. Four is four and a half. Okay, a couple of fives, a couple of fives, fours, and a couple of fives. I didn't get any twos in this one. And so we'll say, we'll start to say that this is, I think, the direction that, that we want to start to talk about. So I hope even as you see here, we did not straight up define educational equity right now, but we already started to get to a direction that helps us better talk about the, the ways we do need to be making shifts within the district. You want me to talk to this one, Maria?
I'm happy to do so and shout you out. So something that we've been doing in our steering committees is really thinking through these bigger definitions of equity, but also really thinking of what we want equity to look like for a Laguna Beach Unified School District. So this is just, and like as a teacher, as models, we wanted to model our own thinking. So Justin can share any insights here, but he created this really great definition where for end image, where for him, educational equity in Laguna Beach Unified School District will progress when we first realize that our systems of communication and restoration no longer fit our community's needs and never work for some. Focusing on upgrading those outmoded systems will allow us to more rapidly improve and innovate towards the equitable future of our, our students deserve. Something I really like about this imagery is these different levels of car stereos. So for some people, maybe we're still like, we're, we're still in the cassette world. We still like our CDs, but it could be that for other people, we, we are in a different era of technology. And for other people, they might be able to thrive with something completely different. So really thinking about the systems that are at our disposal and how we can really improve them so that they serve everyone. So Kristen, you can go, oh, go ahead, Justin.
The only piece I have here is that, and I think this, hopefully this like chaps out the Steering Committee a little bit more. But this came from me learning from you all, like, right? What, what matters to us? Where do we think we need to be focusing on? That was where I heard that you all, that's why the, the systems and the environment definition, I'm, I'm not surprised that that's the one that we connect with the most, because that's what I've been hearing kind of from day one, working with the Steering Committee. So I am confident that we will kind of continue along this aligned pathway of really understanding that we need to start to interrogate and update our systems.
Exactly. And something that we wanted to do, I'll show you my example, and then I'll share a little bit more. We have groups of, we have teams in our Steering Committee coming up with their own definitions. So I'll just share mine. When I thought about educational equity, I actually thought about the ways that when I was little, I never found a crayon that looked like me. I was neither transparent, nor was I like the peach, nor was I another color. So I've loved how there's been progress right now. I see, I remember when I was younger, like, there weren't like a lot of people that looked like me either in the media or in makeup. There, it was very limited. And I feel like I've seen a lot of progress in the last few years. There's like Band-Aids that, that reflect darker skin tones. There's a lot of different things going on, which I think are really exciting. And sometimes I can get very enthusiastic about that. And at the same time, there are a lot of just systemic inequities that make it so that someone with darker skin tone may go into a Walgreens, into a CVS Walmart, and find that the makeup that is for their skin tone is locked up. And that can make people feel ways that I may not have experienced, having the privilege to shop at Sephora now. But when I was younger, it was, I had, I didn't have that ability. So really, the way, something that I was really thinking about is recognizing the improvements that are being made, really wanting to, wanting more, but at the same time, really going beyond our own experience and really trying to understand the experiences of others. So what I wrote out is really thinking of being curious about other stories, discovering and owning our privilege, whatever it is, whether it's, there's a lot of, of great things that you all, especially during the, the questions, you were, think, you were talking about different elements of equity. So that, that's where I'm thinking as well. And holding space for beliefs and experiences that don't mirror our own. Something that I've also heard from the Steering Committee is that ultimately we need to see face and work to change systems that may be invisible to us. So along with transforming the systems that we already have, really realizing the experiences of others and creating that space. And I think for Justin, Kristen, Dave, and I, we really want to create content that is really connected to the Laguna Beach experience. So during this, this time, we try to create a safe space where different people can share out their own experiences. And during our next session, we're going to finish this activity. And maybe at another board meeting, we can share out the definitions that have come up from our different members. And I want to check in if we have time for this. Let us know. All right. So we would love to hear from you if it's possible. We'd love to hear which conception of equity speaks to you and why. So I think this is an opportunity for you all to raise your hands, whether you're, we see your video or not. We'd love to hear your voice.
And we do have some members of the Steering Committee present as well. I know we have students, a teacher, and a parent as well. So I want to invite them to also share, you know, from their experiences, perspective.
Sorry, Carl, I was born. Did you want to say something? I saw you unmute.
Sure, President Norman, just waiting to be called on. Yeah. So, you know, it's interesting because in that first definition, the fairly typical one that we see with the different people on the boxes to see over the fence, I've also seen that image where the whole fence is gone. And so I, I think especially in the, in the work that I've done before, the question is, why did the fence need to be there at all? Right? And so, you know, I just kind of wanted to bring that up. And, you know, the other image on the, on the bikes, I guess I'll just be really honest. The person that's on the small bike with the small wheels, I feel like is not going to get, is not going to get as far. You know, and I think as a member of this governing board, I want all of our students to get as far as they can. And, you know, that, that kind of resonated as maybe something that we could do better at. So I guess on the bike, I was just, I was really concerned about the small wheels. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much for sharing. And I think that really speaks to different components of equity. And I, I want to make a space, I think Joanne had her hand up. I'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, I'm one of the students on the Steering Committee. And I personally, I wanted to like bring a student perspective that, because I have a lot of grievances, I guess, with the education system. And it's hard sometimes to think, well, like, how are we going to actually be equitable if we're not teaching the kids what is correct and how to treat people? So I feel like the one with the boxes, I see that as like how we can give everyone the same amount of education. Education is really important to me. So I personally, as a student, I know there's a lot of questions on like how we're going to actually achieve progress. And I really want to push for changing books or just how the methods of teaching goes, because there's a lot of racist things that happen that just nobody pays attention to. And it's not okay for a predominantly white community to think that that's fine. So that's like my main goal in being here.
Thanks for sharing, Joanne. And I think it really connects to that sense of those like, how can we take away that fence and really be able, especially, I'm just so excited for your generation and how like students like you can really hold our, hold us accountable. So thank you for sharing that. Go ahead, Jan.
And I was gonna say, can we just speak freely, like, everybody could just speak? Because this is a study session. You guys could just speak or, right?
Go for it.
Go for it.
Okay. Well, just hearing Kelly's comment is interesting because when I saw that presentation in the Steering Committee, I had a very different take on that. And my take was that if you have the bike that fits right for you, then you can keep up with everyone else. That if you don't have the right equipment, so to speak, the right resources, then you will fall behind. And so to me, that meant that you match, especially the one where the person is in the wheelchair and they can't ride that regular bike, but they can ride the recumbent bike. And so I just wanted to offer that because I think that is really, that's a really important aspect that we recognize, that we internalize and view things differently across the board. I mean, each person will have an individual point of view. And so reaching the point where we can recognize those and validate everyone's experience is an important part of the work.
I think, Jan, all we have to do is put a electric bike motor on the smaller bike, right? Just to add in a little fun from all the, the e-biking going on.
We've heard a little bit about that.
Hello, I'm one, I'm the other student representative to the, the board. And I'm not on the Steering Committee, but I've heard about it from Johanna. It sounds amazing. I love what the orthotheists are doing. And yeah, you know, to me, I think, I think I like what, what Member Vickers said. You know, I think that like, there isn't necessarily like a single, like, we, through other, in another educational aspect, we're kind of, kind of redefining what success means. You know, I think that there, that's another way to look at this too, in the sense like, they're like, not everyone is going to, is going to go to the same finish line. And we don't, we don't want that. You know, I think that like, we want to just kind of unleash everyone's kind of intrinsic and external abilities. I think there are so many beautiful ways to do that. And I think, you know, give them a bike that fits for them. Give everyone, you know, maybe, maybe everyone gets to, you know, design their own bike even, you know, and have that freedom to choose which bike they want, they want. You know, I think that's such a beautiful idea of, you know, not saying that, okay, you have to go here, but saying like, 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 where do you want to go? And allowing and taking down the fence. If someone want, maybe someone wants to only see half the game, you know, let them see half, half the fence, you know, I think that's an, an interesting way to look at it. And I think that rings true to me in a sense like, I think empowering people to find like what they want to find. And obviously making sure, making sure that, that the way for them finding that is as free and as open as possible. So thank you guys for your amazing work. Yeah, I'm very excited for the rest of the presentation.
And I was gonna make a quick comment. I, on the bicycle, all the same thoughts and feelings were there. I just wanted them to be able to ride in different directions, almost kind of like what's going on the same. Like they all were headed to different finish lines, right? So it didn't quite get me there either. And the plants really got me there because I, I saw that, I could see the parents and the teachers, right? The administrators, the counselors, all the people together. I guess I would have liked to have, maybe they were potted together sometimes. Or I mean, you know, like in the image of what that is, sometimes they're in these groups, sometimes it's by itself. Some of them don't even have a pot, right? And so, you know, we're graded, we're good at identifying in academic. It's really grown in identifying the social emotional. And I still look forward to the identifying of what equity is for us as a community, which is what this work is, this is the beginning of the work, and that's what it's for. So I don't know if any other board member or anyone else in the Steering Committee wants to make a comment now.
I'll make a, I'll make a quick comment. I am part of Perkins. I sit on the Steering Committee and I teach at the high school. I also have kids in the district. And one of the things that stands out for me, just from hearing everybody's different interpretations of those pictures, is that we have as individuals a lot to learn. We have to be learners here and not just teachers. In order for us to teach the kids, you know, what equity is, or how to be equitable, or what to advocate for, we have to learn about other people's experiences. And that, that's not easy work. That, that's hard work. And it takes a commitment to really do the digging and do the research and do the interviews and ask the questions and really be open minded about what other people's experiences are. Only then can we teach our kids how to have open minds and be equitable people.
So well said.
As the kids, as the kids say, would say, said back in the day, not sure if this is what they still say, but that was a mic drop, Parta. Thank you so much for sharing that. This is the experience that we get in the Steering Committee. It's, it's really, and as you said, there's a lot of different perspectives. And what we really want to do is really think about the context of Laguna Beach and create definitions that speak to the community and really is hyper, hyper localized and really resonates with you all. And go ahead, Kristen.
Yeah, I was just going to mention, we've been starting this work in the Steering Committee, but I just want to speak to the fact that as we're starting to sort of mold or kind of align and what a definition might be for Laguna Beach, we're going to bring that back to the broader community and get a lot more input and get a lot more feedback and people's perspectives and make sure that what comes out of the process has, you know, the voice and the perspectives of the broader community. So this is just the very, and we're going to show an iceberg slide here. So not to be like, go deeper than the pun, but the tip of the iceberg in terms of this work and the way that we will engage the community in this work. So I will preview in a few minutes, a little more about what that's going to look like. But I just want to make sure everyone knows too, that this isn't just going to happen in the Steering Committee. And therefore, this is going to be the definition of equity for Laguna Beach. This is just a starting point to really start to hone and define and make it meaningful. Really have true ownership for those in Laguna for what this means for you and for your students and for your community.
Exactly, Kristen. And Dave is going to guide us through a means towards equity.
Amazing. Thank you so very much. And I just really appreciate hearing that conversation. It's very clear that there's a community that deeply cares about this work and that the steps that you're taking to get there start with conversations like this. So I just applaud you all for not only that dialogue, but the continued dialogue on what is right for your community. And speaking of what is right, is getting to that place of equity, that ultimate goal. Dr. Blackburn captures this so well in her quote, when she says, diversity is a fact. Inclusion is the strategy, belonging is the measure, and ultimately equity is the actual goal. And what happens in a lot of cases, in a lot of situations, those four very distinct definitions get bundled and become interchangeable versus us appreciating their distinct nature and individuality that get us to that ultimate goal of equity. So when we think about these pieces, and we think about diversity being the presence of differing thought, backgrounds, identities, we need to appreciate that as we move to that space of inclusion. A lot of the conversation that we just heard was about how do we make more people included in what is possible? And that is incorporating everyone and everyone in the community and getting them what they need to be successful. So they ultimately move to this place of belonging and being able to assess their, you know, as an organization, you can assess your inclusion efforts and see exactly where you are to ensure that everyone can thrive, whether it is a bike with a motor or whether it is a plant that is being watered. And so in that situation, as you move and get closer to that goal of equity, realizing that those are the pieces that will ultimately create belonging and lead us to a place where equity realizing that those are the pieces that will ultimately create belonging and lead us to a place where equity will live and breathe so well in Laguna Beach. So there's a few things that happened and Maria, if you don't mind advancing to the next slide. Um, that happened. Well-intended people want that to happen. A lot of you are speaking to this right now. However, in a lot of systems, especially within education, we found that the systemic inequities still are in the way. And we're not able to create that path and create that change. And there's some very, uh, very important reasons and understandings that we need to unpack to see why. Kristin alluded to this image of a iceberg and you probably have seen similar or analogous situations where you use the iceberg where you see the, what's above the water and what's below the water. And in this context, we actually separate what's above the water from below the water by the engagement line, meaning the things that folks engage on and why. And so above the water are a lot of the things uh, we see, feel and hear. Those are the very overt incidents that come up. Those are the things that we see on the news, whether it's Breonna Taylor, whether it's Ahmaud Arbery, whether it's George Floyd, these are the things that we react to that are blatantly wrong and socially unacceptable. But the things that are below the water are things that some people may feel here, but not everyone. These are things that happen on the day-to-day basis, things that um, for some may be overlooked and for others are very deep and painful and cause trauma. So when we think about these things on the next slide, you will see how these things start to manifest. The overt things that we see and talk about are very clear. Hate speech, we address slurs and bullying, we address to a degree depending on where we are. But those things are overt and we see those on a day-to-day basis. However, you see below the water, how large the iceberg actually is. There's a number of things that on a day-to-day basis that often go very unnoticed. Unfortunately, that's invisible discrimination that occurs and that are socially acceptable. Those moments when we might be in conversations where people make comments or set low expectations and we kind of, we don't check people on those. We kind of allow those to become the norm. And that is what actually is creating the systems uh, in so many ways that create the inequities that we see today. So when these invisible conditions are actually what are preventing the change that we're, that is happening in a lot of school systems across the country and largely in society. So if we go back to that image of the flower getting the water, it's almost like saying, we're okay with having the tin can, but maybe we don't put enough water in there intentionally, or better yet, the plant doesn't need that much water because we believe we have a better idea of what that is. That's the system at play driving these invisible conditions in this situation that's preventing change. So as well-intended as we can be and important as this work may become, if they realize there are intentional systems that have been in place for generations well before Laguna Beach School Board that is here now and the wonderful people on this call have been in place, that systems that are in place that have been ingrained in our society that are making the iceberg very heavy, bottom heavy and making change hard. But with that said, I'm going to transition this over to Kristin in a second. I'll say just one more thing before I hand it over to you, Kristin. I think what's so powerful about this moment is the recognition that there's a lot of work to do. And I heard from um, someone who was providing some comments earlier this, this evening and hearing, you know, the, the importance of getting to action. And I want to just provide a little context around that action, that yes, that action is necessary. And there is a need for it also to be sustained. So seeing this as a journey and not a destination that ultimately allows you to disrupt the systems that you want to disrupt and create the spaces that you want to create for all. And that for it to be sustained, there is thoughtful time and energy that has to be put in the process to create those actions in place. But as you go through this project overview and see next steps, you'll see the intentionality around that and Kristin will take it away from here.
Yeah, thanks so much, Dave. Um, and, and I can pause too, if there are questions um, about that or reactions to what Jay, Dave just shared. I want to make some space um, for board members to jump in.
I wanted to say that there's a lot more things below the engagement line than there were above. You know, I was kind of squinting up here like this to read them. And um, I mean, that might be a, a three or a four to one ratio there at minimum. So I think that, that's really telling. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Um, I just wanted to add maybe like, I see like poverty is one of the lower parts. And I think especially in our community, I notice a lot. You know, it's very wealthy here and that leads to other things and you have to equate why it's predominantly white as well. And so we can't just continuously not address those issues on why things might be the way they are and why racism is easily more acceptable. So I think it's just another step that needs to be addressed and it's good that we're looking at it now, so.
Just want to say that um, one thing I really has appreciated about the educational team that's working with us is this type of concept that it is really opening our eyes to the fact that there are a lot of things that get in the way of equity. And um, that would just make what we end up with here much more likely to benefit the vast majority of our students when we really see those things that are the obstacles. Thank you.
And Dave, I want to thank you for, I, I know you, you said this the first time you spoke with me or spoke with us. I didn't hear it until this time, um, that there are the intentional systems, there are a pre, they're built that kind of drive us. But, but do you drive us in a certain direction? And that if we don't really Jason always has to remind me to go slower. I want to go fast, right? But if we don't slow down and really define those and make sure that we all see them. And um, we identify them with our own system. Then we actually aren't going to make any progress that is sustainable. And, and I really appreciate you saying that again. And you could keep saying that over and over and over and over. Because I think that might be the third time you said it before. I, I just heard it, right? And so I really appreciate that. And that, and I so wish we just had the magic wand, you know, and we could, I know everyone does and we could just change it. I want to change it so it stays changed. So, and it's been, been for months. Thank you.
I think, I think to that point, President Kara Norman, there's one quote that I have from a friend that I spoke to just two weeks ago. Who talked, we were talking about, you know, why can't we go faster? Why can't we just wave that magic wand? And he said, do you want to be right or do you want to win? And so being right is that short-term understanding, it's that sprint to get to a hundred yard dash and get to that space. But if you want to win, it's an endurance journey. And, and that doesn't mean to, that doesn't mean that we won't stay on the path towards what's doing is right. We're just going to have to take more time to ensure that it sticks and stays and that we're able to win the marathon. So do you want to be right or do you want to win? That's the big question.
Thank you. Any other board members want to say something? At this point? Let's go back to you.
Great. So I wanted to give a little bit of context about um, sort of our methodology as, as an organization of how we approach this work because it is so complex, because it is, you know, a, a long-term journey and it's not something that is like a one and done uh, sort of project. Um, and I apologize for a barking puppy in the background. Hopefully that stops soon. Um, but our, our methodology is designed to really get at that bottom of the iceberg, right? We're really trying to unearth all of those sort of covert, under-the-surface challenges that are causing the things that are, we actually see here and, and sort of encounter um, in our day-to-day work uh, in our school system, whatever your vantage point in the system. So our methodology is really centered around gaining a very deep understanding from many perspectives before moving to action. And this doesn't mean that we are not taking any action until we get to step five. It's not a totally linear approach. Um, it, it is more kind of like, if you think about it as like a design cycle, right? So action is happening, but we are not taking action until we deeply understand problems. And that's something that we believe very deeply in and, and is something that's integral to the way that we approach this work. Is that we have to truly understand perspectives and experiences and we have to have that deep understanding before we can move to action or else action will be surface level, right? We've done a lot, there's a lot of times when we work with school systems, we find that, you know, there's a lot of different initiatives happening, but they're, they're happening either in isolation, they're not connected or coherent to a, a common understanding, a common vision for this work and not connected deeply to the experiences of those who are most often underserved and marginalized, who the voices that we need to elevate in here in this process. So you'll see here, our equity methodology um, really starts with inventorying and prioritization. So that's getting a deep understanding of what's actually happening within the community. So that's coming through a lot of different voices, a lot of different perspectives. Um, it, it leads us to understanding what the priorities are um, and, and how we can start to gain a better understanding of that, those priorities, which can lead us to connect. Um, connect is the phase we're about to, to move into. And I will say again, and this is like linearly laid out. This is not a linear process. So we're always learning and prioritizing and getting a deeper understanding. But connect helps us to go very deep. It helps us to vary, to really understand um, the experience by those most deeply impacted um, around those priority areas. Include is, is taking their voices, the voices of those um, that are experiencing um, you know, the, the most, they're at the margins, the stakeholders that the voices are, are the least heard or the least usually involved in the design process and including their, their voices to actually create um, and design some solutions, more equitable processes. And that's where we really start to tackle a lot of the challenges and issues. Um, I just want to again note that, that doesn't mean that we're not taking any action throughout this process. There are clear things that come up that are, um, I don't want to say low-hanging fruit, but just areas that are, that we can easily tackle along the way. But if we really want to get to the bottom of the iceberg, we've got to be really thoughtful about the process to get there um, and, and ensure that we are tackling the right areas and the right challenges and coming up with the right solutions, including those voices. And I, I will also open this up to my team to jump in and, and add anything. Um, if you go to the next slide, Marielle, yep. So you'll see here for Laguna Beach, um, a lot of this inventory of prioritization, it's happening right now. Um, we're learning a lot. We're looking at a lot of data. We're, we're gaining, you know, um, an understanding of the, the journey Laguna's been on and some of the priority areas. For instance, we're seeing academics and the academic experience come out like front center as one of the areas we know we're going to really have to tackle among others, right? So as we're, we're gaining a deeper understanding of the community. In the connect phase, um, I'm going to talk a little bit about it. This is where we're really going to go on a listening tour and, and um, get the voices of stakeholders, a lot of diverse stakeholders and really particularly those um, that are at the margins. Um, moving into fall, um, this work again is a journey, not a sprint. Um, we'll start to move into those design cycles and actually start to tackle um, some of these, the deeper um, system, system issues that are causing the inequities um, that we are seeing. Marielle, next slide. Um, so this just gives you a sense of this kind of spring into summer, just a high-level understanding of, of our journeys thus far. Again, we are, to use again, the tip of the iceberg of this work, we are just getting started. So the steering committee is one way and one means that we're, we're sort of launching this work and getting some momentum, but it's going to um, diverge into a much broader stakeholder process where we will be including a lot of different voices. The steering committee will be an ongoing committee that's helping to guide um, and to advise on this work, not a decision-making body, right? The Board of Education um, is really our decision-making body here. The steering committee though, is like an advisory group who's helping us to shape the work along the way. So you'll see some milestones in this slide. If you go to the next one, Maya. And you'll see a little bit here about the different teams and roles and responsibilities. So you'll, you'll see the project team um, is really Jason, uh, those, the core leaders who are, who are the ones that are driving this work. Um, the steering committee, um, which is more than eight to 12 people, uh, it's a bigger committee who's serving as a, a guiding advisory role. And then we have the district stakeholders. So I'll talk a little bit about that. Um, those are the ones, uh, the different stakeholder groups that we are going to be launching. So we'll have mini advisories, um, really starting front and center with a student advisory, um, ensuring that student voice is at the center of all of this, um, not, and student voice from across, um, you know, all grade levels in all schools as well represented uh, in this as well. I know there's a lot of question about the steering committee, so I just wanted to give a little bit of context as to the why behind the steering committee and a little bit more about their role. So you'll see the um, uh, board resolution here. This is direct quote from the board resolution. Um, but they made a commitment um, in the board resolution. Um, or you all made a wonderful commitment to launch um, what you called an anti-racism task force. So the steering committee, um, and it might evolve as the work evolves, is sort of iteration one of that task force. It is the districts taking the first step. Um, you know, we'd love to include every single person in the district who's interested in this work, right? But to get work done, we need to keep the, the team a little bit smaller on the front end as we move into the broader stakeholder work. Um, they're informing and guiding, um, providing diverse perspectives. So the steering committee is very diverse in terms of the perspectives represented. Um, and they're also going to help us, um, and, and you all as the board be a champion for this work and really an advocate for this work as we move into the later phases of the work. And the last slide here just gives some concretely our work to date um, and some things on the horizon, some next steps that are right on the horizon here in the next several months. Um, and that the, you are here, I is right in between those two things. So some of the accomplishments that we, we've made up until now, we've had three steering committee meetings. Um, we have this board study session tonight. Um, we've worked on developing a landscape of stakeholders and really understanding all the different stakeholder groups um, in Laguna. Of course, this work continues to evolve. That's not to say that we won't be ma- made aware of um, more down the line, but we think we're getting a really good understanding of the stakeholder map. Um, and we're working on um, ensuring communications um, to the public, um, to the community um, and developing a website where you can come and learn everything you want to know about this work, contact us, et cetera. Um, so we're, that's in development right now. Looking forward is when we're going to really again, move to that broader community um, process. Um, we'll have additional state, um, steering committee meetings, that listening tour, um, and we'll really hone the focus um, for the roadmap. So those priority areas will have a deeper understanding through the work we'll do to um, engage community members um, and stakeholders. And then of course, that, we know that academics is clearly an area that there's a lot of, there's a big appetite for and there's a lot of um, opportunities. Um, so that's going to be an area that we're really focusing our efforts um, moving into the next several months. So I just shared a lot of information. Um, invite my team members, if there's anything else you'd like to add. Um, any of the steering committee members and of course, the board, questions, reactions.
I think overall, we've got some very good insights up to this point um, with regards to a, a lot of the different stakeholders that we think historically have not been served. And so I'm really excited to, to start to get to that, to get to the, get to those stages of the work. Uh, what's also been really important is that you all have started to let us know that there are, while, while we, again, we are, this committee was convened to talk about racial equity. Um, there are a number of, of additional uh, really diverse signifiers within Laguna Beach Unified that we think need to be represented in this work as well. And so we've, we've got to a really great place with the steering committee. It takes some time just to get everyone acclimated to working with one another and then committed to the same topic. And we feel we've got to a great place there. We had a really powerful session, uh, most recently talking about if we want to go out into the community and really start to get this work done, how can we ensure that we're coming from a true place of, of empathy and not continue to bring um, you know, kind of the same barriers that got us here? How can we make sure that we're not perpetuating a lot of those um, issues? So just feeling really confident, I mean, excited for the work that we get to do with the steering committee on our next two sessions that will allow us to truly launch the kind of that first phase of getting out into the community. Hopefully, wa- walking alongside you all um, in a bit of a successful way. So you'll start to see kind of what's actually happening now. And we'll be able to have some, some direct channels to give, to give feedback and give support.
I have a question for, um, I'm not sure who to direct it to, but as you guys uh, launch over to this, the stakeholder listening tour and recognizing that your steering committee at eight to 12 or maybe 20, I think we're at now, is different than the stakeholder group, that stakeholder group is much broader. Who do we, like as the Board of Education, as the elected officials representing the school, who do we come to if we have a list of stakeholders that we just know from, you know, that we know from interactions, we know from, um, you know, our job as elected officials, who do You know that we know from interactions, we know from um, you know, our job is elected issues. Who do we send those to for consideration?
Yeah, I would say Carol and Jan are on the steering committee, so they could be great representatives for the board in that. Um I think also directly to us, to Jason, um I I. The various channels that you could go through to ensure that those stakeholders are included.
That that sounds great. That sounds like a a fantastic tour to go on. And I'm sure you're going to have a lot of uh great listening and and stories being told. So um thank you.
Yep, we have hands raised, Kristen.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Uh Shaheen, why don't you jump in?
Yeah, thanks, Kristen. Um, you know, I just wanted to to acknowledge um the feedback that we've gotten from the community members. Um and appreciating that we can't jump into action. I do think, and you know that. I often talk about my work at the PTA level, but there are things that we can do that's that's incremental. Um and take actions, small actions now. So some small things we can do um. Really leveraging our PTAs at the different sites to start doing some of these, you know, cultural acknowledgements or. Um, I know I've I've often invited people to do racial equity challenges with me um and definitely invite the community. To to engage, you know, when invited. Um, we have a a PTA parent group on Facebook. Where I've asked, um you know, community engagement on on some of our DEI issues. So. I think there are things, I don't know, you you all can speak to it as well as experts, but I think there are probably things we can do. Before we do the big sweeping moves that you're talking about, the the longer sustainable things and. What do you all think about putting some of those action items in place and maybe leveraging our PTAs to different sites?
I love the idea. Uh and I think that's definitely when I talked about systems, right, needing to, they're needing to be updated. Uh we're not just talking about at the grand kind of sweeping scale. Uh some of that we were most recently discussing is. How can we start to talk about systems, you know, to even just intake some of these challenges at not just at the district level? How can we make sure that there are more quality things going on at the school level? That we can also start to, uh we want to build just as many systems that at that level as well. Um so so that's definitely something that is on our radar. I think what we're what we're giving context on right now is if if the first phase is working with the steering committee, that's that is a. There's a few bigger things going on with that group and in order to truly maximize and value your time, that's why we wanted to get. A lot of your learning and feedback first, before we started talking about incremental actions. Uh one thing that I think um. That that I want to also be very clear on, that's really important to me, even as a black man engaging in equity work, is that you don't make assumptions. It's really easy to assume that we all want to. Um eradicate certain things or that it's it's important that we all celebrate certain things. But for me, as as someone who's still. Getting to know the community is important that we learn first about what you value before we come in and telling you, hey, you need to recognize this. Hey, this isn't happening correctly. That's not how we're going to get to a place of sta- of sustainability. And so I think we we've heard, we're hearing this enough now that we're starting to. Um bubble up a few patterns of, I think, what what Chris was saying, not necessarily low hanging fruit, because it's not easy to grab, but it is in front of us. We can't see it. And so those are things that are above the engagement line that we can start to talk about, that'll help us find the fuel to to get below that engagement line, which we know is going to take. A little bit more time and energy. But I think it's it was important for me and for our team to acknowledge that while we could come in and say, hey, I don't see where, you know, what's going on for Black History Month. First, we want to first learn, we've got to understand what what is the baseline uh before we uh come in with the right recommendations and the right pieces of the right areas of support.
Thank you.
Enjoying, I see your hand. Feel free to uh jump on it. We we always appreciate your voice.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to add, I think, kind of briefly, there was a mention of the student advisory that would be. Also um talked to, and I wanted to just kind of like explain that uh Soren, Jason and I, we have a steer or. A student advisory committee of another group of students of um, it's very diverse in terms of grades and backgrounds. And so I think. It's very important to have a student voice because it is just me and Serena Hoso so far. As student representatives on the steering committee, and I don't think that's enough to really, you know, get a. Understanding of what we go, what we feel needs to be changed. So um there's going to be a lot of connection with another group of students to help. Um, get more feedback. And I just wanted to highlight that because I think that's really important, just so we know that we're doing that.
So I have a I have a question. Yeah, that's as as a lot of information, but one thing I didn't. So I I think it's um, yeah, I think. It's important, obviously, you know, to have a lot of listening. But yes, I mean, I guess. We'd be naive to say that, you know, everyone in Laguna Beach is all, you know, a hundred percent in in on this work. And I guess that's kind of my question is. How do you plan to, you know, take in the, I guess, to to create sustainability, drive on the system? We need to, you know, have the have, we need to also bring those people in the conversation. Who aren't speaking up, who aren't wanting to be part of these committees. And I guess, how are you? I guess my question is, how are you digging into that perspective? And maybe that's. I think that that's definitely more digging and more, you know, maybe ha- hammering might be better metaphor than than listening. Um. I guess, how how are you doing that to create that sustainability that is required to really, you know, have a long lasting that outlasts, you know, what what for many might be just like. Okay, there's a lot of motion going on, but how do we really like create that systemic change that is necessary and that systemic, I guess, um, I I guess motivation?
And I think so Soren, maybe I could add to that. Those people aren't self identifying themselves. Right? I mean, the people that are here, the wonderful, you know, participants and panelists we have are all self identifying themselves as interested in equity work, right? But there's a whole slew. There's twenty six hundred other people out there in the district. Or families that aren't self identifying as interested in this work. So I just wanted to add that terminology. Thank you, Soren.
I'll go ahead and take a stab at that, um because I think you're you're absolutely right. And when when we're talking about listening, we're we're talking about listening for all perspectives and that's that's really imperative. Um for us is that we are hearing those different perspectives. And so we also understand that we need to meet people where they're at. If we say come. You know, contribute to this equity initiative, we're probably not going to get a lot of voices that we do need to hear to better understand. Their perspectives and empathize with their perspectives. I think this, you know, this whole process for us, Justin mentioned it, is always grounded in empathy and always. Trying to understand from people's lens, from their vantage points, what their fears are about this or what their hopes are and and gaining that understanding is not going to come through. You know, we talk about a lot when we talk about stakeholder engagement, their traditional means of stakeholder engagement, right? We send out an all call and those that, you know, uh respond to it are those that we listen to. We um have been really conscientious as an organization about how we've designed a lot of different ways that we can. Get different stakeholders, voices and and representatives um. Without um having them be put off by sort of the context of it. Um so just really. Honoring where people are at, meeting them where they're at, and having those entry points with them and knowing that it might take time, right? We're we're. Going to hear the voices first that really want to speak about these things, but we have to design ways in which we can engage um other perspectives and other voices. Justin, you want to jump in?
We briefly adding there because I want to make sure we give space for um the 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 raised hand. Um my my response to that is it is it is a great question. And first off, I feel like. We'd be disingenuous if we told you we immediately had a plan to get the folks who are, you know, disengaged or right or anti the work all the way on our side. But there are a few different kind of like research backed um strategies here that actually that that I do think we have planned to kind of engage. Uh and so the first one is, let's actually not make assumptions. If you um if you say, hey, we're going to, we're changing the holiday calendar. You actually get some people who who are not totally for whatever idea you think you want to change. You'll get some other voices there letting you know why. What was previously in place um is important. So I don't, I I am confident that as we go out and truly get into the work, we're talking about shifts we want to make. That we we will have mechanism in place um just intentionally to to try to get to sending voices. But I think that automatically we will have that those will be present as well. Um is is that's just kind of typically how that goes. And then the second piece is, there's a lot of research that shows, especially early on in the phase of long term shifts. So not just a direct action, hey, we've got this above the iceberg issue that we need to address and we're going to address it. When you're trying to address a lot of the things that are below the iceberg, it's actually really important that. A lot of that work is opt in first. If you want to join, come on and join. We've got it. We've because we already got a team of people who are ready for this work. And so that is where we'll start to make some progress because instead of trying to spend so much time only engaging naysayers. We are able to get the people who are ready, who have ideas, who have the energy, we're able to kind of get them all aligned. And then that does allow us to kind of as that snowball starts to um, you know, get a little bit larger and roll down the hill, you start to pick up folks who. Uh may have been stragglers along the way who want to join in, or at least they start to see it. And now they have more questions. So we'll be able to more. Um have more intentional interactions with them there. So it is a great question. It is something that we are mindful of. And that's why I was acknowledging the thing earlier about trying to learn. If I come in just making assumptions as, again, we our first meeting with the steering committee. We come in talking about race and immediately we hear a significant number of other um issues and topics that we should be aware of, right? And so just day one, we already realized that, hey, we need to. Uh I think part to mention, we need to be students and we even realize in order to be supporters, we had to be students as well.
Thank you. I think that's, yeah, I mean, and and that's, I guess, that's all the best that we can expect. I s- I mean. I don't think that are as like a board, I think, I think it's kind of, I don't know what 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 steps we can take to to help in that necessarily. But I mean, I. I don't want to speak on behalf of everyone, but I mean, just from a student perspective, um I would love to work on, you know, anything like that, getting students involved. And I think because I think since, you know, it's like this play where a lot of students, you know. Are, you know, I think the beauty of like social media in modern age, you know, that people want their voices to be heard. And I think in that sense, I think there's a lot of ways that we could as students do work to get those voices in, which maybe might be harder to get from like parents, adults who are more, you know. I don't want to say like, like, like all, like a old dogs, but I think that there's as kids, maybe it may, it's maybe it's a na- uh uh naivete, but like, it's kind of idea like. Oh, like, like my idea is the best idea. And there's some beauty in that. I think we tap into that. I I I'd love to, you know, be be a part of getting that student voice out from all perspectives.
Ultimately, we want to serve you all. So that would be, again, disingenuous to try to do work around you and ultimately is for you. So you you guys have to be at the center of.
Some of the voices that you're not hearing from um. That people get like parents, they get really, really busy with the day to day life and with parenting their students and with going to work. And all the other things that they deal with in the family, which we then also don't want to make assumptions about what their position might be. Because it isn't that they don't want to be engaged. It's just that, okay, how do you find the time to do everything?
Exactly.
And and low stakes anonymous ways for people to get feedback um and make it accessible um are differently. Again, Justin mentioned, there's some research back ways that we can. Try to reach people that historically haven't been reached because it would take them showing up to something. Um, you know, if. The whole kind of world of stakeholder engagement, particularly as we've all moved to this virtual space, um has really um gotten a little bit more sophisticated too and how we can. Get like pulse checks even from people.
And Jim, you had your hand up, Kelly.
President, uh Carol, I also saw Linnea had her hand up, so just wanted to.
Thank you. Jim, do you want to go first and then we'll? You're still on mute.
Yeah.
There you go.
The teammate one is signed up for Nextdoor. It's a uh um oh, uh a a local community group. Um which uh covers a a whole variety of what's going on in Laguna and it's a real eye opener. Uh for uh objectively uh hearing what different voices think about different topics in town. And uh it was a real eye op- it is, it continues to be real eye opener for me, but uh that may be something you just may want to uh to 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 look at. Thank.
And who else had a hand? I'm looking, I'm sorry. You just speak up.
I believe, um, I'm sorry if I misread your name. Uh Marielle was uh to have someone in the attendees list, but I don't believe at this point we can bring attendees in, correct?
That's correct. We came up with a comment now. That's correct. That's why I was looking for hands and went to try to win. Thank you, Soren.
I'll just mention one thing, Jim, to that point. Um, we definitely are not going to, you know, reinvent the wheel here. If there is uh like existing data and existing sources of information, existing groups we can tap into. Um, you know, that's that's the priority too. Um, because there's a lot of information that exists, so we don't have to. Uh create everything from scratch. So that's that's a really great point. Thank you.
And then um Dee, I have not, I haven't heard a word from you. I don't want to close things up. If there's something you want to share or say.
I'm I'm just eagerly listening.
I understand. Okay, well, I want to make sure we wrap up because we said we'd be done by seven thirty. I'll hold you to that. I appreciate everyone's time. I appreciate all the passion, the thoughts. Um, everyone being a learner, those who need to be a teacher at the moment to teach us, and that I'm looking at parties to see. Um. And um if anyone has any additional comments, questions. Tonight, tomorrow, you guys can email me. I'll make sure they get back to Justin, I'm sure they get back to the team. Um, just email me, um and I could take care of that. So this is work for all of us. Everyone's going to be included, it wants to be included in. Those who don't yet know they want to be included are going to be included. And that's what we're all hoping for is to get there. So um with that. Um, I'd like to move number six on the agenda and ask if I could have, well, before I. Do that, I want to let you know, the next regularly scheduled business meeting is April twenty second, twenty twenty one. And I have a motion. Um to adjourn the meeting.
Moved. Second?
Thank you. Thank you, for Osborne. Thank you, member Vickers. Any discussion or any comments you guys want to make real quick? Thanks to everyone.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
You so much.
And as a reminder, BB, I'm sorry.
Let let, can I take the vote real quick?
Yes, do you think? But then we're adjourned, that's why I asked, like, so I can make it. So if you could do that, that'd be great. Can you start with student board provisional vote, please?
Uh, Soren?
Yes.
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Kelly?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes. Motion carries five zero. And uh thank you, everyone, for all your time. We look forward to the next one.
Bye, everybody. Good night.
Good night.